Straightforward that you think about is things like bacon grease, cooking from meat, and then vegetable oil. There's the oil right there. It's also found in some things that you might not, you know, immediately think about. Things like butter and fried food, you know, that can show up in our waste stream. Cheese, other dairy products, sauces and gravies can be kind of sneaky in some of the places like salad dressings. On the right here, this is a fume hood above like a flat top grill. And all of that, that started out being nice and shiny stainless steel, and that's coated with the grease that evaporates during the cooking process. Okay, so that's where it comes from. And this is also fog. This is the Moscow Fatburg, as we talked about in the workshop. This is an 18-inch sewer main that is, you know, becoming very close to being totally blocked. That's got that capacity of that sewer line by maybe 60 percent. So it's effectively, you know, turned everything upstream of that blockage is also reduced. And that's definitely not good. That can impede our wastewater So again, you know, like that picture shows, this is a problem for the wastewater collections, reducing hydraulic capacity and the potential for blockages. And if that becomes totally blocked, that can lead to side sewer backups and even potentially sanitary sewer overflow, which would be raw sewage in the streets. Kind of the day-to-day or maybe not quite so often, but repeated cleanings. We're cleaning the same site over and over. That's a maintenance issue for our collections crew. Problems that are caused at the wastewater treatment plant, again, they're repeated cleanings, hand maintenance of actually getting in and removing this buildup of this fat oil and grease increases our biochemical oxygen demand, which is one of the requirements of our NPDES permit. Talk a little bit about current regulations, excuse me, and our EPA-approved National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit requires that we make sure that all of our systems are working correctly at all times. That means everything from the wastewater sewer system to the wastewater treatment plant and what we discharge into the stream and everything in between. As far as our city code is concerned, any discharge with more than 100 parts per million of fog is prohibited. And that's an industry standard, basically, you know, it's in place for a reason. That can cause problems in the system. Any discharge that can have a negative effect on the system, such as fog, we require pre-treatment so that that waste is in an acceptable condition. We can't just accept anything at the wastewater treatment plant or into the sewers. Currently, where interceptors are installed, sometimes called traps when we're talking about grease, fog, they're required to be maintained in continuously efficient operation at all times. Just having one there in place is not necessarily enough. It needs to be maintained. If they're not, they can become ineffective. As we move on to our proposed changes, I'm going to have a lot of text here, you know, it's kind of just the nature of the presentation here. So I'm going to kind of talk about that. I'm not going to read everything verbatim, but I wanted to have everything up here for the audience and for everyone watching and so that we can reference it. But I'm kind of just going to speak to these. So first here, we had a few additions of definition of terms that are pertinent to the changes we're proposing here. The first here is best management practices. And this is kind of the roadmap for how to meet the requirements of the city code and ordinances here. Sometimes it's not always really clear how to meet those, so that's the goal of To find what an interceptor is, you know, it's really something that's made to separate and hold things that we don't want going further into the wastewater collection and treatment system. Specifically, we'll be talking about grease interceptors as well, and that is to separate and hold grease and other food waste that users may discharge. And, you know, if there's any questions throughout here, feel free to stop me as I go. So I'm going to talk specifically about interceptors now that we're on the subject. Excuse me. So fog abatement in the city, including who has and who doesn't have grease interceptors, is largely unknown at this point. And so we want to have the ability to specifically require the installation of grease interceptors because, like I said, this is a pre-treatment system. And this also, this requirement will also make sure that everyone who is required to have one, you know, that could be discharging fog to the system has one. We know that some people already do have them in place, and they may be doing a great job of managing their discharge to the system.
To be clear on this, Ty, we're talking about commercial establishments, not private individuals.
Correct. Yes, that's correct. Yeah, for the most part here, I mean, we're talking about food service establishments and commercial food preparation. Thank you, Mr. Redner. That's much better. So we were talking about best management practices earlier. And like I said, they provide specific instructions on how to meet the requirements of the code. And this gives us the ability to establish those best management practices. And along with, in your packet, I included that draft best management practices manual. And that also includes a lot of information beyond just exactly how to meet those requirements, but it educates the customers on why it's important. And it has also other techniques on how to reduce the amount of maintenance that's required by some of these practices. Here's what currently, as we saw earlier, the code says where installed, it must be maintained in a continuously efficient operation. And this just kind of relates that to the best management practices. It tells you how to maintain them. And this just, this makes it clear that failure to comply with those best management practices can risk enforcement There are a number of additives available which basically solubilize or break down grease by various different mechanisms. And it allows the grease and/or its components to pass through an interceptor, really, and it makes it useless or ineffective. And this is, those additives are to be prohibited for that reason. Now we get to the violations portion here. Our goal is to achieve compliance and to maintain our system, the wastewater collection and treatment system, as we're required to do so. But with that, there might not, there might be a cause to encourage some folks to do so. So we have to have these enforcement actions in place.
As Ty said, you know, any policy that we have, we need to have teeth in order to be able to enforce it. Some sort of ramification if people decide not to comply. But our goal is always to try to achieve compliance and position ourselves as an ally in these. We like to educate people on why it's important, that it's not a policy that we're just making up just because we didn't have anything to do on a Tuesday. It's something that is important for our system and that when we don't address these things, it affects the cost to our users. It affects the viability of the system. It can cause backups for people, as Ty has covered. One of the items that came out of our council workshop was a desire from the council to have us look at incentive programs and so that it wasn't, so that we could have the carrot in conjunction with the stick. And we have initiated conversations with business owners about what that might look like. We've started, we've had a couple of different meetings with different food service establishment owners in Moscow and talked to them about what they would like to see from that incentive program. Because what we don't want to do is have an incentive program that nobody's interested in. You know, if we, I don't think a lot of restaurants would want us to put, remind people of sewage on a sticker that we put on their front door as people are coming through. So that might not be the best incentive. And so that's something that we're in the works on, and we are, we're making a lot of progress on coming up with a good incentive program. One of the things that we've, in discussions with these business owners, we've had some good recommendations. And one of the desires is to try to expand the recognition program perhaps to include not just the water as it leaves the establishment, but also the water as it comes in and combine it with our conservation efforts and potentially look at some sort of, you know, water stewardship award of some sort that would be given out by the city, which seemed to be far more attractive to these business owners because they thought, you know, some sort of environmental or water stewardship award would be a more attractive and comprehensive way to deal with this. And so that's something that we're in the development of and will develop a package in conjunction with the business owners that'll be affected so that we can come up with a good system to recognize the people who are getting on board and complying with this ordinance.
Yeah, that's right. And, you know, we definitely want to be an ally and work with our customers here. I'll kind of go over, with that being said, we do need to have some teeth in place. And there's kind of been a change. And Rod Hall, our attorney, talked about this in the council workshop. This establishes an infraction instead of a misdemeanor immediately for a violation of code. And, you know, this is going to make things more effective. And with an infraction, there can be a fine associated, but no possibility of jail time. So it's more efficient and, you know, it gives us, it gives us another option without going straight to that higher level of enforcement. And, you know, it's a tiered system. The first fine would be $100 with that infraction. The second one would be a $300 fine. After that level, you would go to, you can go to a misdemeanor. I would be very surprised if we ever got to that level. And as you see in there, it's, we don't necessarily need to give an infraction. We're going to do the things we can to work with our business partners and get compliance and make sure that we're doing what's required.
You know, I think that's an important thing to note in our implementation is we're not going to come out as heavy as handing out tickets as we walk around from place to place. Our goal is to educate and to come out and teach people about why this is important and offer up resources for how they can become a compliant and, you know, and be wise and flexible in the implementation. And so, yeah, we're not, we're not going to be coming out with the ticket book. We're going to be coming out with the educational pamphlet and offering ourselves as a resource as we work toward implementation.
Again, a small change here to the previous code. Just make some changes that works better with, as far as wording and how this actually is going to work. This final change is a clause that protects the city and staff. Through this process, there will be, you know, inspections and things of that nature. And this is a protection for us. So the next steps, you know, we'd ask that you recommend council approval of these amendments to Moscow City Code, Title V, Chapter III. And then we'd like to begin implementation of the fog reduction program in early 2016. So with that, if there are any other questions, we'd be happy to field them for you.
For a facility that does not have an interceptor installed, what's the approximate cost that would be involved in that?
There's quite a range. You know, it depends on what you need, the size of the facility. On the low end, a small 20-pound under sink grease trap can be in the range of a few hundred dollars. If you're a large full-service facility where that would be filled up day after day and there's a large amount of maintenance, you need to go to a bigger system. And if, some of those can be in the many thousands for an underground grease interceptor, you know, where it would take excavation and it's a, it's a large piece of equipment.
What's the procedure the city is going to use for inspection of violations?
Well, we're going to follow the best management practices manual. That's kind of the metric that everything's, that everything is, will follow. If there is a violation, we're going to start with an internal enforcement action program where there will be letters and notification, and then we can work with them to set a timeline to make the required changes to come into compliance.
I guess my question really, Ty, is how frequently do these need to be inspected? And I'm assuming it's the city that does the inspection?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure. Initially, we'll go out and do an initial inspection, and that will be big, heavy on the education side as well. After that, it will generally be an annual inspection.
Annual.
Right. And, you know, part of that BMP manual is good record-keeping and showing what they're doing to meet the requirements.
Obviously, this requires more manpower than, because it's a new program, do we have the personnel in place to do this without having to hire somebody else?
We anticipate being able to run this program with our current personnel. One of the things that Ty and Kyle have worked hard on was establishing our backflow prevention program. And they've really gotten to the point where they've made that pretty efficient. And so that's one of the items that has allowed us to free up time. These guys work really hard and really efficiently. And so we anticipate being able to do that with our current staffing.
Okay.
And I, we should mention, if you don't mind, Wayne, one of the other things that was mentioned in the council workshop that we were asked to address was the metrics, how we were going to know if this was working. And I don't know if you could touch on that briefly, Ty, on the measures, the key measures that we've identified.
Sure. A big part of that will be actually measuring by the maintenance of the grease traps, how much is removed, especially for those large ones where they have to have a pumper truck come in. They do a really good job of estimating how much is being removed. As well as the folks have the smaller traps, we'll be able to just see how much is taken out by how much maintenance is done. But I also should see that through the maintenance of the collection system and at the wastewater treatment plant. We should see reductions in those. And those are things that we can quantify.
So we have accurately documented maintenance. You know, we have areas where our conveyance staff goes out monthly because there's so much fog buildup. And so we'll be able to document a reduction in maintenance as we need to visit these sites less frequently. And then also with the treatment plant, as Ty indicated, there are some parts in the plant that tend to collect this fog. And they'll have, we'll have the ability to document the maintenance on these things, the need for how frequent we were having to replace parts associated with that. And so we've identified a number of key measures that we'll be able to come back and report on the success of the program.
And along with this program, I would assume then the city will be spending less time in removing clogs from main lines?
That's a big part of the reason for it, is to, you know, keep our efforts from doing things over and over.
Do you have any questions?
You never do. I thought maybe you might have one tonight.
You prompted one. I didn't have one until you said something.
Oh, I agree. I did it.
Wayne asked about this applying, that it applies to businesses. I don't see the ordinance written that way. There's a reference in the, the only place I can find, well, not the only place, but the reference to businesses is in the whereas's. But the title doesn't limit it to businesses. The definition of grease interceptor in Item 9 of Section 32 and of interceptor in Section 13 of 32 fall behind the definition of dwelling unit, which is constructed, used for residential purposes. And then between the two of those, a house service line is talked about. If this is intended for commercial establishments only, should it not say so?
Go ahead, Gary.
Well, one of the things you try to do, whenever you have a service, you have an enterprise fund and you're intended to, you may charge for the service you are providing, and that includes if someone is putting an excessive load on the system. I suspect if you had some sort of establishment that wasn't a business that was putting out a large fat oil and grease product, that the ordinance could be used to prevent that from happening as well.
If I may, the building code dictates the size of facility and the type of facility where a grease trap is required. So the current, the current building codes will require these at those types of facilities. So those are dictated by the IBC, the International Building Code.
Again, Wayne, you started this with your question.
All right, go ahead. I'm kind of, yeah.
I don't see anything tying this back to the building code, like you say. I mean, we need to know if we're enacting something that if my cook has a habit of pouring all the bacon grease right down the drain, and the city finds out I'm doing it, that I'm going to be required to put in a grease trap or interceptor, we need to know that we're enacting that.
Certainly.
If that should be the case. Or if you've got a 12-plex of college students that love bacon.
As they should.
Or something. You see what I'm saying, Gary? I mean, I don't have any problem with regulating what we want to regulate.
Sure.
But I want to make sure that we know what we're regulating. And secondly, go ahead and answer that.
Well, I was just going to say, we can, in preparation for the council meeting, since I imagine this will be a regular agenda, and we can task the city attorney to provide a memo that gets that tie back to address the issues that you're concerned about.
And if the staff's position is, we have no intent for this to apply to residences or whatever.
Put it in there.
I think it needs to say so, so that, and then to follow on that with Tyler's comments about we're not going to be heavy-handed, et cetera, et cetera. Tyler, I hope you're here for a long, long time, but you won't be here forever. And this ordinance will stay on the books until it's changed. So again, in that same vein, I think the council needs to be aware of the penalty clauses in here and make sure that they're comfortable with them and not put them in with the caveat that, well, we're really not going to enforce them unless somebody makes us. I mean, it shouldn't, I don't think we ought to be doing things like that, Gary. Can you see what I mean?
I understand.
Well, I'm glad I brought that up. I'm glad you built on it because then I'm going to expand on it even further, too, is it does look like, and I'm assuming you're coming up here, Rod, to allay these concerns, it looks like it would be a fairly simple step to move to, Big Brother now says that all homeowners have to do this, too. My guess is that probably wouldn't happen because the size of the sewer systems from the homeowner's private line to the city's larger line are so small that if a homeowner's going to use a lot of fog.
Plug up first.
Their own lines are going to get plugged up, not the city's.
Correct.
But at the same time, I understand where Walter's coming from on looking for those assurances. Rod?
Well, you're going to talk about who you want to regulate. We're trying to regulate anybody who's going to provide an excess amount of fog within the system. So if there is a homeowner who likes their bacon and all they do is dump the grease down in there, I think the city would want to be able to take enforcement action against them, or at least require them to separate that out because they'd be harming everybody else's system as a whole. So they may, a personal resident who has a big problem, they'll discover doing maintenance and stuff, or they get called out a lot to unplug these mains, that I think those people, we should be able to regulate them if they're the one that's causing a problem to the system.
Well, the question then bears in mind is if you've got a city sewer line that's plugged up in a residential neighborhood, what residents was responsible for doing that? And how do you figure that out?
We can figure that out, if I may, Rod, with our camera crew that can put our little remote control camera in, and that can fairly easily be traced back to a source. If it's that heavy and being clogged by a single user, that would be pretty easy to identify.
You know, right now, the direction that I'm leaning, and I don't know, you haven't said a whole lot.
I haven't had an opportunity to get a word in.
But I want some protections right now. Well, I'll give you a chance. You were late, you know, so, you know, you learned a lot today and you need to digest that. But right now, I would really like this written in as it's for commercial establishments only. And if the city eventually down the road decides that we have a residential problem, then let's go back and look at it again. And if we have to rewrite it for residential because this absolutely shows that there's a need, then that's fine.
If you don't mind, Wayne, the fog reduction program, there is an education and outreach program for the residents as well. It's not, our focus is on the largest contributors, who are these food service establishments, certainly. But the program itself is intended for everybody because it's something that we all contribute to the system and we want to try and reduce. And so the reason that the focus of the inspection portion of the program is on those food service establishments is because they are the largest contributors and they are the ones who are required by the building code to have some sort of different type of oil, of separator facility. You know, that's not required on your residence, on your residents because you don't produce as much. And so you're asked just to do some good housekeeping things in-house. You know, we have little containers to put bacon grease and these sorts of things in. And so my only hesitancy with that line of thought is that it, I would, one of the things that we want to do is emphasize that this is all of us. This is our sewer system. This is the sewer system that belongs to the residents of the city of Moscow, and we all need to do this to better maintain and make more efficient our sewer system. And so if we, if we single out a group and say, okay, policy-wise, you guys are the only ones that fog applies to and everybody else doesn't, I don't know if that's the best way to do that.
I'll let Jim, you're on.
Okay. What I wanted to ask is, since you guys obviously have the capability to know the source or where the continual plugs, you can trace that upstream and you can focus your enforcement efforts based on your compliance, just education, based on where you're seeing the plugs now. I'm sure you've done that. Like, we've got these major food service establishments that are upstream from where we're always having the plug, so it's one of these guys. And you can run your camera up and find out and say, you know, I don't know if you guys are aware of this or not, but there's a lot of grease coming down your drain and we need to do something about it. And so you have that capability. And since you do, and like Ty said, for the households, if you have a household contributor, then they should be maybe required to meet these things. So I don't really have a problem with, I don't really think we need to say it's just commercial establishments. It's focused on them because they're the biggest contributors. But if you get a household, the 12-plex with guys that eat a pound of bacon a day and pour all the grease down.
Or sausage.
Or, yeah.
We don't discriminate.
Whatever. I make both. That's where you're aiming, that. I do make bacon. But you should be able to, you should be able to focus on that and say, this is what you're going to have to do if you don't stop putting it down the drain.
And I think, if I may, Wayne, I think that's the point is that.
We're having way too much fun.
If we consider, if you consider, you know, I mean, I love bacon. I eat so much bacon. It's just unhealthy, the amount of bacon I eat. That is a fact. But the amount of bacon I produce compared to what The Breakfast Club or Blooms Say may produce in a day, it's, the scale is just absolutely different. It's, and so that's why we focus the enforcement. But Jim's absolutely right. If I decided that I was going to cook all the bacon out of my house for one of these restaurants and deliver it cooked, then, yeah, they probably should show up at my door and say, hey, man, you got to do something with this because you're causing problems for your neighbors.
But I'll bet you don't pour your bacon grease down your drain either.
I do not pour my bacon grease down.
Neither do I. Walter?
I'm more with Jim on this than I am with you, Wayne. I don't have that big a problem with it applying to residences. But you asked the question, and staff said this applies to commercial. I'm trying to get us clear on what it, who it applies to and what the purpose of it is. So I'm not So I'm not so much suggesting that it be changed to be commercial only, unless that's what the intent is.
Sure.
But to sit here and say this is applied to commercial, when in reality, it's not just applied to commercial, I think is misleading.
Well, I think that the guide.
Let Rod.
Go ahead, Rod.
Early on in this, when we were just started, when I started to get educated about fog, that was one of the questions, who this was going to be geared towards. And generally, it was going to be towards the big producers, because those are the ones that you can identify. To go into the homes and stuff, there'd have to be a real big problem before we could go identify, because they'd have to be the 100 parts per million, which is going to be quite a bit. Most people at home, if they dump a little grease down, it's not a good idea, but it's probably not going to rise to that level. But early on, we talked about, should it be written just for commercial industry, or should it be enough for, we should be able to go after where any problem is that's identified? I think I intentionally wrote it, left it that way, and I thought that's what we.
You know, the manual that's written here for the best management practices is, is aimed at food service establishments, and that's because they're the ones that are most likely to produce grease at a level that's that high. But I.
They've said that, you know, they come up with a program to educate homeowners, try not to do this, try not to put this down the drain, because it does cause a problem. And I think that's a good way to go.
And I suspect that part of the problem, Walter, I think you may have hit on the head, may have been in our presentation, because our focus is certainly on the food service establishments. The, the program does not solely apply to the food service establishments, it's just the focus of our, our education actions, you know, it's, with, with anything, you're going to want to start where you can have the most effect, and that's certainly where we can have the most effect, and they really are the ones that produce at that level.
All right. So I gather that the recommendation of this committee is in, will be to approve the amendment of the Moscow City Code, and we'll pass that on to the city council on a regular agenda item. Am I correct?
Yes. And, and please make it clear in the presentation, the applicability of the proposed ordinance, so we don't.
Sure.
Mislead anybody in what it is we're doing.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is Les McDonald will be presenting the Southeast Moscow Sewer District Contract Renewal Process. Do we need to take a short break before we get into this?
I hope not.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Well, we spent a fair bit of time over the last couple of months talking about the services agreement to, for the city to provide sanitary sewer conveyance and treatment services to the Southeast Moscow Water and Sewer District, something we've been doing since 1981, and continuing to operate under a 1991 contract that continued the original work from the eighties. City has held a workshop with the Sewer District Board and President, and I will tell you that President Lois Pritchett is here in the room today, if we have any questions for her along the way. As part of that workshop, we identified a number of items that we felt it would be appropriate to address, and within your packet today, it's the second attachment, there's a little one-page summary that talks about those items that came from that workshop that we wanted to talk about in moving forward. That included the support and assistance for district administrative services, adjusting district's customer surcharges to address additional district administrative costs, some provisions dealing with district boundaries upon annexation by the city, and addressing options for the city providing revenue to the district for pass-through flows, and then some general collaboration on common issues regarding the operation of the system. So since the workshop, we have been working on the draft contract that was originally developed in June of nineteen, or June of 2014, excuse me. And what is in the packet today is the latest addition, I think we've gone through about five or six revisions over this course of the last three months, to get to the one that is in, in the packet today. I will apologize in that the version that's in there shows as a legislative change version that should have been just accepted and a clean version that came to you, because you have not seen the prior drafts along the way. So I would guess, or just recommend at this point, that don't worry about what those changes are specifically, you know, in that draft. We'll talk about the overall document and what's in that with respect to the original The third item that is within the packet today is a summary table, it's multiple pages long, and I developed this with the idea of trying to help you understand where changes have occurred from the 91 contract to what's being proposed today. And there are a lot of sections within the document that we've just carried forward, the language from 91, and perhaps provided a few, I guess clarity-type revisions, cleaning up some of the language, just making things a little easier to follow in some cases, those types of things. But the content essentially remains the same for many of those items from the 91 contract. So as you go through that, that summary table, it's broken out by section, and it, on the left-hand side, it has the column that has the 1991 agreement clauses, so I've just extracted those. Sometimes a clause might, or a, a single paragraph might include two or three different items within it, so I've broken those out as best I could and tried to simplify them, just so we can at least have a list of what they are. And then on the right-hand column is the, what we're calling the draft 2016 agreements. That's the one proposed for consideration by the district board and the city council in moving forward. So if you look at that table, you'll see in, in section one, there's a lot of them that remain the same. The first page, they're all essentially the same content. As you get to the second page, there's one item down there, it's the second-to-last one in this, in section one that is deleted, and that had to do with ensuring, the city ensuring district facilities. In review with legal, we felt that was probably good to remove that, as the city does not ensure the district facilities. So other than that, the section one remains pretty much as exists in the 1991 agreement in terms of content. As you get into the section two, second page, it carries on into the third page, mostly the same all the way through that. On that third page, you will see that we did add a requirement for dedication of new mains to the district, and dedication of public easements to the district for lines that are not located in the right-of-way. Just wanted to clarify that, if somebody was constructing additions within the district, maybe to serve a development, and it was going to be outside of the highway district right-of-way, in this case, that there need to be a dedication of a public easement for that line to reside within, and that the actual main itself had to be conveyed to the district for their ownership in the form of a dedication. At the bottom of that page, there's one item deleted in the new contract, to certify service lines meet district standards at the time city starts maintenance. That was a throwback clear to the 1981 agreement, essentially said that, hey, it's a new system, certify it's good to go before we actually take on maintenance. Obviously, we've been doing maintenance for 20-plus years, so that was an item that was no longer necessary, so that was deleted in the new draft. And then when you get into section three, that's where we really start to see changes between what we've done previously in the contract, and then what is proposed in the new, new version. There are really three areas around which the changes revolve. One of them has to do with the surcharges that are applied to the rates the district patrons are charged. One has to do with pass-through flows, and how we deal with flows that are generated outside the district that would pass through the district's system back to the city. And then connection fees would be the other one. So if you're in the area outside the, the district that has a pass-through flow, what do we charge for connection fees or GFCs, general facilities charges? So those are really the, probably the three major areas where we're going to see changes from previous contracts to what's in this draft. And there's a little bit in there with respect to district boundaries, just a minor clause that was added as well. We'll touch on that. Excuse me. So in section three, one of the first items that's changed is the second bullet, or second one called out there. Currently, we have a $1 surcharge for administrative costs for district accounts. That is essentially for the city, for the costs that we recognize or experience from added accounts within the system that we have to operate and deal with, billings and collections and all those types of things. Essentially, it's financing and accounting and billing processes. That's been $1 since 1981. We're proposing that that go to $2 in the new draft. An addition in that area is meant to address concerns stated by the district during the workshop, which is that the district really has no revenue stream to them directly, because the city does all of the processing of the bills. And they do occasionally have administrative expenses for things that are not handled by the city, and needed some form of revenue to cover those expenses. So what is.
Hang on, just a second. Lois, are you catching everything that we're going over here? Would you like to come up here and join us? This is Lois Pritchett. She is chair of the Southeast Moscow Sewer District. Sit up here, you can catch a little bit closer to what we're, what we're going on. Go ahead, Les, sorry to interrupt you.
No problem. So in order to address the concern of the district about having at least a little revenue for them to be able to handle their administrative costs, the draft proposed is an additional $1 surcharge on those district patrons. So it would go from $1 previous contract to a total of $3 in the proposed contract per month on each account. The next change has to do with the connection fees. In the original contract in 1981, and then subsequent contract in 91, this was addressed to say that the connection fee that the district charges would be the same as the city's general facilities charge, and that is still the case. And $350 of that would go to the district and the rest to the city. Well, in 1981, that, I think the, the total was about $150, if I remember correctly. And so it was not a large amount involved that went to the city. And it has not changed since then, even though the city's general facilities charge, and thus the district's connection fee has gone up considerably, and we're in the range of $1,800 per connection today. So there's a definite disparity there in terms of the distribution of that general facilities charge. So what is proposed is that we modify that to state that 70% of that connection fee would go to the district and 30% go to the city. Therefore, as that number changes over time, it's just a percentage distribution rather than a fixed dollar amount. The 70/30 split is consistent with what it was back in 1981, and in reviewing, you know, potential impacts and usage of the city system by district flows, the distribution still seemed to be fairly relevant for what's occurring today. So that's why we're proposing the 70/30 split.
Remind us again what GFC stands for?
General Facilities Charge. That's the city's version of a connection fee. In the case of flows that are generated outside of the district that would pass through district facilities, as it turns out, and going back and rereading the original contracts, again, I did find a clause that addresses that, which I had not realized was there previously. And it said that flows that are generated from areas outside of the district would be subject to both the GFC and the connection fee. And it doesn't give you much more detail than that, and the thought is that because it is in that document, it is with respect to flows that are going to pass through district facilities, and that the GFC portion would go to the city and the connection fee portion would go to the district. So essentially, those areas that would be outside district but pass through district would see a double rate on connection fees.
Isn't that double indemnity?
Well, there's two systems involved. There's two systems involved, and, you know, they're paying for, in essence, capacity within the city system and capacity within the district system, and they're using both. Now, what we've proposed is a modification to that that would reduce the district's portion to a 70% of district connection fee. So it'd be consistent with those that are in the district. So if you're in the district and you're paying a connection fee, 70% goes to the district, 30% goes to the city. That 30% to the city is for use of the city's system and capacity within that. Well, if the city's also charging the GFC, then, then you're doubling up, and so we'd take that 30% out. The city would get a GFC, 100%, the district would then get the 70% of the connection fee, which is what they would see for a district patron as well. So we're actually, in this case, would reduce the connection fees from what it was in the 1991 contract.
We ever enforced that, if I may?
We have not had any that I'm aware of that have been pass-through flows that have not been annexed into the city.
What you're fixing to?
Well, we anticipate, yes, we have a plat right now that would be, that would be the case.
How many properties?
I believe it's in the 40s, if I remember right.
Forty-four.
Forty-four. Yeah, that'd be richy, too.
If I may, so those residences, lots that are within city's annex, that subdivision.
Yes.
They would pay the city's GFC plus 70%.
Of the district's connection fee.
Of an additional GFC.
Yes.
So even though these are city residences and an annex portion of the city, they are paying additional connection fees.
Because they're using a district system, not a city system.
And I did not feed that question to Gary. He thought of that all by himself.
Understand.
And that clarifies the way I was reading it, too. Frankly, right off, I'm not real pleased about that.
And the challenge is that the district has a facility, and the connection fees are there for them to be able to address impacts on their facility if they have to replace it, just like ours GFC does. But we're using district facility and then city facility in some fashion. So how do you, how do you deal with that, is the question? And there's different approaches. I mean, we can, this is one of the items that identified that's probably going to spur a lot of conversation in how we want to address this.
Go ahead, Walter.
Les, do you, you have anything else other than the fee structures to go over in general with us? Because I have, I have a lot of questions about the fee structure.
Sure.
But rather than getting totally into it before you get through any other miscellaneous stuff.
Uh, yeah, let me touch on the boundaries item.
Let me throw something out here as committee chair. We've already been at this for almost an hour. We have another agenda item, which we have some folks sitting here to talk about. Perhaps we need to move this to a city, to a council workshop again. If this is going to take another 45 minutes to work this out, I don't think this is the time or place to do that.
Sure.
And if we need, if we need a workshop, then we need a workshop, but, Gary?
If I may, just first.
Go ahead.
I mean, I can, I can probably just touch on the last items here in another five minutes and figure out which way you guys would like to go. Does that work?
Well, I can say, I, well, I think what I'm going to do is I'm going to allow about another, I'm going to say about 20 minutes is all for this subject. So let's see what we can get done in that 20 minutes.
Sure. The, the next change has to deal with system and district boundary expansion subject to approval by city and district. That would still be the case, but there are some cities out there that are looking at modifying Idaho state statutes right now to address the overlap of districts and cities. And so we're anticipating seeing some, some presentations to the state legislature this cycle that could affect how the statutes are written, and could adjust the processes for dealing with overlap issues. So we've added a little bit of language in here that essentially just says, you know, we're going to comply, the process would comply with the Idaho state statutes as they currently exist or as they may be changed in the future. Just to kind of looking out, thinking that, okay, something may be different here along the way. So then, the, the last group, if you will, is section four. And section four did not exist in the original contract, this is something we've added, and it's specifically addressing non-district flow conveyance. So there's a lot of, you know, bullet sections here, summaries of the clauses, a lot of clauses relating to pass-through flows, about ownership of the lines, who makes, you know, the connections to the district system, you know, the acceptance of existing services that may run through the district as is, dealing with capacity issues. So if there's a capacity problem, it's generated because we're taking a lot of pass-through flow through the district system, what do we do about it? If there's a need to add capacity within the district system, what do we do about it? A lot of those types of clauses are what are located within section four. And then. If there's a need to add capacity within the district system, what do we do about it? A lot of those types of clauses are what are located within Section 4. And then the one other item that kind of touches back on, kind of the overall revenue issue and how do we use district facilities is the very last one, which is that the city would compensate the district. We proposed a $3,000 figure per year for pass-through flow for use of district facilities, conveyance of flow through their system. That would only start when we actually have pass-through flow occurring and until such time as, as things change in the future beyond that.
Walter?
Pass-through from, from city?
To district.
But not outside of district and outside of city pass-through?
Those, that is a question of can we even provide service in that case? Because that would be service outside of district boundary, outside of city limits. And there are other clauses within the contract that say that that has to be approved by both the district and the city. And, you know, that could occur maybe on the very southeast quadrant or eastern side of the district. That might then be a district boundary modification in order to just provide that service.
Why, why do we have, I've, I've lost an earlier argument trying to make things simple, but I'm going to keep trying. Why do we have to have all of Section 4 regarding non-district flow conveyance? Why don't we just restrict the district to handling what's within the district, even if that means enlarging the district? They have the legal right to do that.
Yes, they do.
I believe. They can tell Bill Smith, who's outside their district and wants to hook up, "We will not hook you up unless we take you into the district." And they can decide whether or not they wish to do that.
They can.
We could do the same with city annexed property. I mean, that would be one way. We seem to be making this extremely complex and convoluted. And I realize, Les, has done a lot of work trying to put it on paper and explain how it works and to, and to have it work.
Sure.
But I just, I'm just not totally sure that we need to make it this hard. If I may, Les, if you would, let's go back, this isn't money, because money's another whole nother thing. Section 1.3, page 1 of 7, the city agrees. This has to do with what the city's going to provide maintenance-wise and when the, and what the district gets for having this agreement with us without any cost to the district. And you and I talked about this, this paragraph with this, what I consider to be a run-on sentence in it. And I don't, I don't believe it's been changed, and if it has, I don't think it's any better. The second sentence says, "Maintenance, operation, and repair, as the terms are used in this section, in respect to districts, shall not include cases of major breaks in district's sewer pipelines or damage to district's pumping facilities occasioned by unusual conditions, major failures, or natural disasters, including earthquakes or flood, resulting in a loss costing more than 50% of the city's annual revenue collected from within the district's service area." And I contend there are ways to read that where if it isn't a natural disaster, it doesn't, the sentence doesn't apply. But I don't think that's the intent.
Right.
It, it doesn't really address something that just plain wears out and yet costs more than that 50% threshold that it talks about. I just don't believe that, that paragraph three correct, gives, gives good guidance to the district and the city as to what it means.
There is, there is within that...
And I'm not going to ask you to sit here and fix it.
Sure. I would just point out, within that, there is the clause, "occasioned by unusual conditions, major failures, or natural disaster." So I think it would probably fall within those first two, but we can certainly look at that further.
Yeah, I just think there's got to be a better way to write that.
Sure. Take another shot at it. Okay?
Jim, anytime, you can jump right in here. Mayor?
Go right ahead.
Page 4 of 7, top of the page, I'm looking at the legislative, because that's all I've got here. Number 11 in Section 2. This is under the district agrees. "To turn over to city upon annexation of district, the entire sewer system, together with any improvements operating property, rights of way easements located within the This should occur without a capital cost to the city. So it talks about annexation of district, which first leads me to believe annexing the entire district. But then the last part of that sentence seems to indicate it could be talking about a portion of the district.
And originally, it was, and the changes that you see there were to take that out, and we may have overlooked that piece.
So 11 only applies if we take over the entire district in its entirety.
I think that was the intent, yes. So, yeah, there's a clause there. We'll clean that up a little bit.
I, again, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what, what your intent is there and what it is we really want to do. You know, we, I think it's a chicken and egg with Ridgeview 1. I'm not sure whether it was in the city first and then that, and then put in the district, or in the district first and put into the city, or if they occurred concurrently. I'm, I'm not sure. But that's what brings this to mind. So 11 is a question mark for me. And then I think the rest of my things, Wayne, have to do with the, the way things are charged to different people and Gary's question of double charging.
I said, I said double indemnity, and I didn't mean, I meant double jeopardy.
Yeah.
You know, and that, I really do have a problem with, with, first of all, we have a developer that's within the city limits, outside the district, they're developing property, and the homeowner, the person that buys the property, is going to have passed on to them additional costs to hook up to the sewer system. I'm not sure that there's a fairness involved in that with the, number one, the developer who has to pass it on to the homeowner, then ultimately with the homeowner.
Yeah, the, I mean, consider, consider the alternative. If you're in an area that has no sewer service but for the sewer district facilities, because the city does not have a system there, your alternatives are either to connect to and use a different entity's system, in this case, the district, or build your own system to pipe up over a hill somewhere and get back to the city system.
And all that.
Okay. So you're going to see an extra cost either way in that you're either going to have to build that system, which potentially is even a higher cost, or you're going to have to figure out how to use somebody else's system, and then what are the costs associated with that use? And that's what this is meant to address.
So you go down the Troy Highway, and you've got a hill, and you develop on the south side of the hill and have to connect to the sewer district, or you just go 100 yards over the hill, buy a lot on the other side that connects straight to the city, and you pay, what, $500 less? I don't, I don't even know what the hookup fees are. What's the sewer district charge?
In the 1800 range is this...
Did you do the matrix that I asked for?
I did.
Did that?
Yeah.
Would that help us figure out who's costing who what?
Actually, I say 1800, actually 2,100. They've, 1800 in my brain from the waterside. The, Walter had called and asked if I could maybe summarize some of those rates and fees. And that's what this is meant to show. Just run through this real quick if I can.
If you want to explain what this is.
Right. This is just a comparison of existing contract rates versus proposed contract rates for the different scenarios that you could see. So if we look up here on the screen for just a minute, you'll see city customers in one column, district customers, so they're just within the district, a district customer that's also within the city limits, which would be the Ridgeview 1 subdivision, or city customer outside the district, so they'd have a pass-through flow condition. And under the existing contract rates, monthly sewer rate for that city customer is $44.30. For the district customer, because of the $1 surcharge, they see $45.30. The district customers inside the city limits see the same as the city rates because they've been excluded from the surcharge. And then the same would apply if we had them to pass-through rates or pass-through city customers. When you look at the connection fees, oop, back that up, it's, it's $2,130 on the sewer side for the GFC. We currently charge the same amount for district customer, for a district customer within the city limits. And then under the existing 91 contract, as I mentioned earlier, both the district connection fee and the city GFC would be charged. So that 4260 number for that one single-family residence. The tapping fees and inspection fees, you can see what those work out to be. Really, the only difference is there's a $5 surcharge on tapping and inspection if you're a district customer. In the proposed contract, the changes really are that the surcharge on the monthly bill for somebody within the district would go up by $2. And the connection fee for the city customer that has a pass-through condition would go down from the 4260 down to 3621. So that's the 170%, 1.7. Other than that, I think it all remains the same.
So...
I don't like the connection fees.
So if, if I may...
Go ahead.
So why not just require everybody that's going through the district to be in the district?
Well, you certainly could, and that's an option. Then we just run into the same situation of Ridgeview 1, of having city customers or city residents and city properties located within a different entity's service area and everything that goes with that.
Which Ridgeview 1 is. We've already got it.
Which G1 is, yeah.
And I'm, and I'm the only one that's brought up the question of why don't we get Ridgeview 1 out of the district? I mean, it could go either way, but we're, we're creating multiple hybrid scenarios here of in district, out of district, pass-through district. We've got, we've got four here. Could grow. I mean, we could end up with five or six different scenarios of users that we've got to address how to handle whether they're, whether it's fair or not. It's just the, the creation of it all.
Okay, let's make a determination how we want to handle this tonight. Because I'm, I'm not particularly happy with the connection fees. The rest of it, I don't have a problem with. I could send this to council myself personally, but without a recommendation to pass it as it is. I'd like those connection fees to be equal. But I think I may be a minority in that. Jim?
No, well, I, I think what Walter says has a lot of merit, that if you're going to be inside the incorporated city and you're tying into the district, that you should probably be part of the district and you pay the connection fee to the district, and it simplifies the whole thing. The idea that we're, you know, that if you're in the city and you're hooking up to the district and you're a pass-through and you have to pay twice, that doesn't seem equitable to me at all. So I, I think we should probably have another workshop, and if you need that in the form of a motion, I guess I would do that. I'd move that we have another workshop to try and work out the details of how we're going to deal with all these entities that are in multiple connection.
Well, I don't know that we need to make the motion or anything on that. As a committee, we can direct staff however we feel fit. Is that the direction you'd like to go?
Yes, I don't want to...
Discuss this a little bit more?
I do not want to hold this discussion with six council people in a, in a council meeting. I mean, not that I'd, I mean, I'll do it if, if staff thinks that's a good idea, but I don't think they do.
And Lois, you haven't had an opportunity to weigh in on it. I'm sure you have some opinions, too. So I know this is dragging out, and I do understand that. But I think this committee is going to recommend that we put together another short workshop with, with Lois there, and let's get these things finalized so we can get it done and get it done right. Gary?
Les, when is the expiration of the latest extension?
I believe it's the end of January. So we've got about two months to work our way through, unless we do an extension.
Probably the second week of December would be before people start heading out of town. Okay, we'll take a look at it. What I'm hearing, though, is that you have concerns about connection fees and rates paid at this point.
I didn't hear so much rates, but well, connection fees and...
Well, I think, I think the dollars are what have, have you...
Right.
Concern. I'm taking it from the dollars back to all this different who's in, who's on first scenarios that seem to be more complicated than they have to be.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Appreciate your hard work on this, Les. I know it's a pain, but it's why you get paid the big bucks, right?
And one last comment, if I may, before they leave. I understand needing to pay the district for pass-through if it is pass-through. I'm personally not real happy with the 70-30 split thingy, whatever. There ought to be some way to work out volumes. A average residence puts this much through the system, therefore, the city owes them that much for passing through their system. In other words, renting their pipes or something like that. Just a final thought on that.
Pass-through, pass-through annual cost.
Yeah, pass-through annual cost based upon number of properties possibly.
And that's an option that we considered as well. We'll, we'll talk about that.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the last item on the agenda is the downtown restroom design approval request. Dwight Curtis presenting.
Well, good afternoon.
Hello, Dwight.
Bringing to you a request for acceptance of a design for our downtown restroom project. And I've got a slide presentation for you. I'll go through some of those fairly quickly because you've seen it before, but it's been a while, so just want to bring everybody up to speed with where we're at. Of course, this was originally a council goal, and so staff put together a steering committee to develop a plan to bring back to you so we could fulfill the goal of putting a, a downtown restroom project together. And the steering committee consisted of, we had some business members, Chamber of Commerce, and some city staff. And plan strategy, of course, we looked at the possible locations, the facility styles, the design, or prefab, traditional, modern, what the facility would look like, and of course, cost, the funding plan. And just as a side note with that, $170,000 is budgeted in the fiscal year '16 budget for a, a downtown restroom project. And of course, the design process. On the locations, we looked at whether this to be a standalone facility or in an existing facility in the downtown area, whether to purchase an existing building, lease space, pay existing business for use of theirs. Of course, the Friendship Square area came to mind right up front. We looked at the fountain area adjacent to Friendship Square proper, as well as the Jackson Street parking lot, and in general, anywhere that included the farmer's market area. In the end, what we concluded was this location, this is Friendship Square, and that's the Fourth Street right-of-way, and basically that First Bay inside of Jackson Street parking lot. And this, sorry, it's a little cluttered looking, but this is that sidewalk, and there, there are the bays. Excuse me, one second. There we go. And so you can see how it fits in there, fits very nicely. Initially, we had it on the north side, but it just became problematic with the bigger rigs trying to make turns in there. So I moved it just to the south side of that, and it fits very nicely. And of course, Friendship Square is just off to the right.
Before, before you move off that...
Yes, sir.
Dwight, I can't, with all the lines, I can't count parking spaces. How many spaces are we losing with that?
Three, four, basically.
So that one you've, you're on now will be lost as well?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
That's for apron around it.
Okay.
And just another look at it, this is from just across at Friendship Square. This is the existing sidewalk, and it would be basically here. Initially, it was here, and we moved it just to the other side to here.
When did it move?
During the design process. It just wasn't going to work on, on the right-hand side, on the north side, because of the turning of the big rigs.
Alley access?
Yes. And then facility style, looked at the standalone or a prefab. We determined standalone facility. Looking at traditional versus modern, I wanted to go traditional. The facade is, will have a, kind of a used brick veneer, so it fits in with the, the brick buildings downtown. And also, gender-specific... The facade will have a kind of a used brick veneer, so it fits in with the brick buildings downtown. And also, gender-specific sides with two toilets per side. The two toilets was, I mean, more the better if you have bigger crowds, but anything past two toilets per side put us into a different category where then we'd be required to have the changing rooms or the family room. And so, the price then starts to skyrocket. So, we kept it at two. Yeah. So, this, we did not get a rendering with our project, and this was basically what it'll look like, except it'll have a shed roof and would have the brick veneer. This is the plan from above, and of course, you can see the two sides, two toilets per side, privacy wings, and back here would be the plumbing alley. Here's a side view of it, shed roof instead of the pitched roof, and the brick veneer. And this here is, those are the privacy wings there. Just another look with sectionals, so you can see where the restroom inside looked from that view. Of course, out here, you have the drinking fountains. And another front view. And of course, cost is the thing that always gets everybody. I don't think anybody doesn't get surprised by the price of these darn things. Of course, we did look at prefabs initially, but we were asked to look at it in more depth, and not just a similar size, but smaller sizes. And these are based on a 5% contingency. And so, the existing designed by Design West was about $158,000. And a similar design from a prefab was about $163,000, so it was very close. Going to a two-single users on the prefab was about $87,500. And I threw in, just for kicks, a single restroom facility and unisex. This one, the two-single users, that's unisex, two unisex restrooms. And the third one is unisex, but you can see it's still close to $80,000. There gets to be a point there where they're fairly similar between one and two restrooms or toilets. And so, with that, I mean, you can see it's going to cost a lot of money. The fewer toilets, of course, the less it costs. We did run this this past week. The Parks and Rec Commission, the Farmer's Market Commission, the Historic Preservation Commission, and the steering committee talked about this and what their desires were. The steering committee basically just confirmed that we were on track with what we originally came up with. But the other commissions looked, of course, at the needs and for the fit, wanted to give you, council members, as much information as we could, along with their recommendations. And I'll read this little part, just so I don't forget some of it. But the endorsements were based on the real and increasing need. I threw in an example, Friendship Square events for 2014, we had 45. And in 2015 thus far, we had 62. I believe those included Farmer's Market Days as events. Things where the Friendship Square is reserved. So, the increase, the need, the special events, all that stuff that goes on downtown is increasing, and in a good way. It's also the most suitable location that we could find. It closely matches in the historical look with the brick veneer and the shed roof. And it also, in the location where it's at, sends the appropriate welcoming statement that makes it about the Moscow community and downtown area. And we are asking that the city council or that this committee recommend to the city council to approve the downtown design that was produced by Design West. And I am here for any questions, as well as, I don't know if you're going to open it up, but we do have some members of some of the commissions here, if you...
Well, I'll start off with if either of you have any questions for Dwight.
Yes, sir.
Dwight, the costs that were associated with those particular buildings that you showed up there, does the $157,000, does that include the design work that's been done, the study?
No.
That's been done ahead?
That was in addition.
So, that's in addition. Do you know what the number is on that?
I think we paid, what is, 14-something?
15,000.
15,000 for that design?
So, we're still within, barely within the budget at 170, including that?
170 is construction only.
Yeah, it's already been paid. So, the 170 is construction.
Yeah, the design, yeah, that's already been spent.
Okay.
It's already, it's previously budgeted.
Yes.
Correct.
As I recall from a previous conversation before you got on council, Jim, is the council had authorized 14,000 or 15,000 for a conceptual study of it, and that was paid out of the previous year's budget.
Yes.
In fact, I think that actually came out of the council legislative fund.
Hmm.
I'm pretty sure it did.
If not, it was in planning and something else was paid out of the legislative.
Whatever. Any other questions, Jim? Walter?
Do any of the prefabs come in brick veneer?
There are some that you can get different varieties of exteriors. Is one of the things, talking to CXT, they had some brick, it's not a veneer, but it's actually in the cast.
In a brick.
The cast looks like brick.
Looks like a downtown Moscow.
I can't guarantee that. It's a concrete cast that looks like it has bricks built into it.
But it could still be more than this.
Well, not if you went to a smaller one. But at the same time, the similar one, yes, was more, the brick, anytime, any change to the exterior is an additional cost. And I don't have that amount. It wasn't super significant, but it was, seemed like just about every change that you had was about five grand. So, and I asked about the color, and they said, "Well, it is concrete, so, you know, whatever you paint it, it would just be a maintenance item that you would have to repaint." To get the color in a faded, you know, the used brick color, he said, "Might be a little problematic. You might have to go to more of a straight brick color with that."
You spoke before two or three different commissions. We have representatives from those commissions here, so I would invite one person from each commission to come up and just make a couple of comments as to which design they were in favor of and why. So, Aaron?
Nice to see everybody.
Aaron represents...
The Farmer's Market Commission.
You identify yourself as well?
No. Real name?
Real.
The real name.
Aaron Carroll. Do you need my address as well?
No, that's fine.
Okay. So, Aaron Carroll, representing the Farmer's Market Commission. Dwight did come to our meeting and showed us all of this information plus some. And Kathleen and Gina have been keeping us up to date as this project has been going on. And first, we just want to say thank you to everyone who's put in the work. It's not easy tracking all these down and knowing, as the numbers start to pile up, that it gets more and more stressful. And I think they put a lot of time into consideration into finding the right fit. It obviously fits the need for the farmer's market, but just the entire community as well. So, we're excited to see this project move forward. But in looking at all the designs, we, the farmer's market, wanted to move forward with a recommendation for the Design West option, the stick-built option, I think, is what you were calling it, just because the comps that were put up before us, one is more expensive and less desirable, even if it is brick-stamped concrete and we're painting it, that's not the same as brick. And I think if any of us were building a home, we'd probably say the same thing, let alone a facility that's supposed to serve our entire community and last quite a long time. And then, the other options, as we go down the line, just aren't as desirable. It's something that people wouldn't even want to put on a city path road, let alone in the city center of Friendship Square, the market, and all of these events. So, we support the stick-built feature. We think it fits the needs space-wise. We appreciate the time that went into finding all the specs and think that it will have the long-lasting look for downtown Moscow.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Gina, are you here representing the chamber?
I am, indeed. I am, Gina Terusio. Good evening, gentlemen. We're representing the Chamber of Commerce, and I would encourage, we would encourage you strongly to choose the Design West, design for the aforementioned reasons that Ms. Carroll has already mentioned. It is, we are the front door to our community. And aside from the number of holes and the fact that we want it to be, we want it to be brick and in keeping with the rest of downtown, it's very important that, for our visitors, that we make a good first impression as well. And I think it needs to be a nice aesthetically pleasing restroom as well.
Okay.
Nels Reese, Historic Preservation Commission. We fall in line with the recommendations of the other folks. We're very aware that this is the most historic intersection of Moscow. Beautiful in that sense.
Which one is that, Nels?
Friendship Square.
Okay, but this is not in Friendship Square. This is in the back parking lot, if I'm correct.
Trifle, that's a trifling observation. It's part of Friendship Square. And so, we wanted it to be brick, too. We think that those are the four brick of our five or six historic buildings downtown that are significant and historic. These are four brick ones. It would be really a big mistake, I think. It either has to be steel and glass and really absolutely modern or the brick. And so, we like that brick, and we're happy with, I think, the way it's located looked pretty good to us. So, we weren't, we didn't really quibble with it. So, I think we would go along with the Design West concept as well. And I like the idea of trying to match, Wendy would have been here, but she's out of town, but try and match bricks that matched one or more of the buildings, because we don't have another corner anywhere in the area, in the region, that has four historic buildings right there. And so, I think using the brick is really good. So, we're reasonably happy with it.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Walter?
Well, not to be more trifling, but I'm not sure you can hardly see this from standing in the intersection of Fourth and Main with the NSA building protruding out and this set back over to the south side of where y'all have moved it to. I've been a really big proponent of a downtown restroom. I saw them outside the United States 20 years ago and wondered why we didn't seem to have one. So, this is a fulfillment of a dream. My problem is the price. $70,000 to add two additional toilets is pretty spendy toilets. And that's my biggest problem, hang up with this. We did get a letter handed to us before the meeting from NSA, and in it, Gary, they've put a number on what their contribution is for the farmer's market time to provide restrooms, which we have previously thanked them for.
Sure.
But I don't know that we ever had a number where it said that it was costing them $5,200 for six months to make those restrooms available for the farmer's market. And I think that's extremely admirable.
Yeah, I've heard the number of $8,000 bandied about unofficially, so I'm happy to see that they've actually...
Only 5,200?
Put a number on there. If I can speak to the design myself, one of the things, and Walter, you're exactly right, it's, you may not be able to see the restroom from portions of Friendship Square. However, there are things that, as we move toward the historic downtown, it's part of a national historic district now. What we're trying to do, what our Moscow Urban Renewal Agency is trying to do as well, is to make the south or the Jackson Street corridor more of an urbanized area. They're making strides on the left side, or excuse me, the west side of Jackson Street to invite the community, the traveling public, into downtown. If you look at the design that Design West did, they took into account and the work that the steering committee did, it has a shed roof for a reason. Because the shed roof, although it's not reflective exactly of the flat roofs in downtown, there are no gabled roofs in downtown. So, all of the prefabs that you see on the screen have a gabled roof. So, in keeping with the flat roofs of downtown, this shed roof meets that. The weathered brick as opposed to precast, you know, you're exactly right. You can have concrete precast in a brick-like design. However, to make it look like the brick of downtown is going to be extremely tough, if you can do it at all. In echoing what Gina said from the chamber's perspective, the historic downtown keeping in with that design seems to be very important. In addition, I will admit, Walter, you're exactly right. Going from a two-facility facility to a four-facility bathroom, it does seem like a lot of money. However, I will say that I did ask, as preparation for this, and I'm sorry, he's not here today, he's out this week, Bill Belknap, our Community Development Director, I asked him to check with the Health Department and to check with the IBC to see what requirements would be for the size of gatherings that we have in Friendship Square. Not only the farmer's market, but the other gatherings that we have down there, Art Walk, the Homecoming Parade, you know, things in Friendship Square that aren't as big as farmer's market. And he indicated that, for farmer's market alone, if we were talking about that, you would need between eight, I think it was eight and 10 porta-potties to actually meet the projected need. So, four permanent fixtures, while taking some of that pressure off, would also provide the necessary capacity for the other, what, almost 40 events that have occurred in Friendship Square during 2015. So, I think I'd rather see the city right-size this facility than build it too small. If it's built too small and it isn't to capacity, then either people will abuse it or it won't meet the need for which it's intent. And most of the cost, or a large percentage of the cost, is the actual siding, hookup, so on and so forth. You are paying a premium for the additional facilities, but this is our one shot to get this right.
Jim, comments?
Well, this whole project started before I was on the council, and the study was done ahead. But it seems like the citizen comments favor what's been designed. We're a representative democracy, so I think we should probably try to do what the people want, what the people are willing to pay for.
Well, it's cheaper than the prefabs.
That's true. Oh, definitely, it's, you know, it's less expensive, and certainly, the design's more appealing than a prefab, and probably less maintenance, because you don't have to paint it.
And the council put the money in the budget.
Yeah, money's in the budget.
That's what they're budgeting for.
What are you going to do if it comes in overestimate and overbudget?
Over, well, the $180,000 in the budget is 150...
170.
170, and the bid's at 157, including contingency.
Of five, just 5%. If you take a more reasonable 10% contingency, you're up at 165.5. I'm just saying, I'm just saying that...
You said, "What am I going to do?"
No.
I'm going to sit out here and talk to you guys next year and tell you what I think you should do. That's what's...
You will look forward to that.
Dwight?
Just a quick housekeeping. I'm not sure what all you received. You received a letter from NSA just prior to the meeting. Also, there's one from the Historic Preservation Commission. If you hadn't gotten that, I'd like to enter that. And then, also, there was one that was sent by the chamber, by email. And then also, there was one that was sent by the chamber, by email. And I'll make sure those are all included in the council packet.
Submit these into evidence, Your Honor.
In response to Walter's comment about, what are you going to do if it runs what's in the budget? It better not overrun what's in the budget. There's no excuse for it to run over what's in the budget. And I fully expect the council and the staff to sit on top of this thing. But when the bids come in, if the bids come in over what's been projected here, then you'll refuse the bids, just like we've done before.
If the bids come in and they exceed what is budgeted, as usual, we'll bring those to council for your consideration.
They're their consideration.
For the council, speaking of which, you have a council member-elect in the audience would like a chance to address the committee, if you would allow that.
Catherine, come on up and address the council committee.
Hi, Catherine Bonzo. I'm interested in seeing the historical piece preserved in this. I agree with Gina on the welcome mat toward the city. I think that the piece that is important, and this goes with the events that are large, like Farmer's Market and the arts, is we have a variety and diversity of ages that use these restrooms. And that is really important to consider, too. So the two holes per size is really important, I think, too. So I would, I would like to see this go forward.
Thank you. Well, with that, I see we've got Councilmember Weber here, and the mayor's here. Everybody.
Agree with what you just said.
Mayor Lambert, do you have anything you'd like to comment on?
Invite me, I always talk.
I don't.
Here's how I see it. This restroom project has been worked on way before I was ever the mayor of Moscow. And when we put it downtown, and it is an entrance to our downtown, as far as I'm concerned, it should be done right. I see it where it should. If it runs a little bit over, and it very well may, I've got no idea, Wayne. But I think it should be the brick look. Because from a historic standpoint, 10 years from now or 20 years from now, you don't want to have somebody say, geez, what were they thinking when they did this? If it's some slab building or whatever. So that's my point of view. Now, it's a project that you guys have been working on for a number of years. I just think it needs to be done right, and that's my opinion on it. That's how I see it.
Okay, thank you. Well, I don't like the price, $157,000. I didn't like it when it was 100, when we first started talking about it, $140,000. I think it's really distressing to me that it costs $157,000 to build this small restroom when you can build an entry-level home for that price. But it is what it is. It's less expensive than the prefabs that are shown here. I think Walter brings up a good concern when he talks about the contingency and an overrun. But that'll be dealt with if and when it needs to be dealt with. So I think it's going to be this committee's recommendation to send to council to approve the one from Design West. Am I correct? Walter?
Send it on. I will make one final comment. That was, Design West's first cut was $177,000. So you've cut 20 out of it just to get to this point by holding it to a 5% contingency. I think, I'm thinking lots of luck.
Yeah, lots of luck. Well, hopefully, it is what it is.
Consent or regular?
Okay, is there any other?
Say that's regular, wouldn't you say?
Consent or regular?
Let's put on regular.
Awesome discussion.
Yep, now for a little more discussion. And with that.
Nothing further.
I think we're done. I think we're done. There's no more business to come before this committee. We stand adjourned.